Hi y'all, welcome Moon Graffon Show. Great to have you with us. It is Monday. Great to be back in the saddle and had a lot of fun last weekend and I'll tell you about it off the air.
Nothing like being thrown curveballs when Monday is already the big enough, biggest enough curveball that there is.
Yeah, but when Monday is the best day of work week, you've got a whole week to get it right now. And by the way, I'll take some of those. Brandon's already opening up the snacks. We haven't gotten the program. This ain't Buddha. Don't tell him what you brought this time. Whatever your wife put in the bag.
Something like that, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's good enough. That's good enough. Anyway, by the way, thank you for the chocolate. Tell Hannah, thank you for the chocolate covered strawberries. Brandon brought me a couple today. Not that I encouraged him to do that last night, anything like that, but anyway.
Encouraged demand.
Well, I knew you had missed me. You wanted to bring me something for my reunion because I'd missed the day of work.
Oh, yeah.
Alrighty, 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. Let's jump gears. As you know, special session number 732 in the last couple of years. State Treasurer John Schroeder joins us. Mr. Schroeder, how you doing, sir? How you at? Well, first of all, how's the job going?
The job's going pretty good. It's been about 11 weeks and a couple of days, but who's counting?
Oh, my God. Woo, 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 woo. But I'll tell you what, it's another special session. I guess, I know you're interested in what happens because you've got a budget that depends on the, uh, you've got a budget that depends on the budget too. Uh, but boy, I'll tell you what, I, I'm just, first of all, the, the big news is, and I want to ask you about this, is that all this tax breaks we got from Trump, and now you read that a lot of us are not going to end up getting any or not getting much of one because the state's going to get that money.
Yeah, so, so as the governor talks about how great it is that we're going to get another somewhere between 250 to 300 million dollars, what, what people seem to have missed out on, that's, that's money that, that you and I in the tax base of Louisiana are going to be paying the state.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt about it.
We're fixing to get a tax increase. Now, there's arguments that you, you know, it, it broadens and, and there's a lot of arguments on both sides that it's, that it's, and, and some of the, uh, people inside the governor's office now using that as, uh, example of what Louisiana needs to do with, with its taxes.
Well, no, but what they're talking about doing is getting more money out of it. Hell, it's, it's happening automatically.
Well, and that's sort of my point. So, so the state's going to get an extra 300 million dollars from the, the change in tax policy. That means the taxpayers in Louisiana will be paying 300 more million dollars to the state. So if John Bell gets what he wants, we'll be paying another 1.2 million dollars and billion in taxes next year.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of tough. You get a break and it's taken away. And I know people are emailing me like, Fire, I've got, I'm telling how many emails I've gotten some text messages saying, what is it? What the heck are they doing? Well, it's the way we do our taxes. And I can promise you, the governor and, and the left in Baton Rouge who want more money, they, they don't have a problem with this at all. As a matter of fact, they love it. They're going to get much more money without having to say they raised more taxes.
Right. Well, I, I can tell you that's going to come off the, the bottom line because the, the, the House Republicans aren't going to give into that. I mean, so, uh, the, the real question right now, whether it's going to be 250 or I heard this morning it could be as much as 310 or 315, 315 million dollars. So they'll just write them automatically reduce that from what the governor's asking for.
Well, and, but they need to. They need to do that. And you know, you throw in a half a sales tax, half a cent sales tax instead of a penny, you're at about 800, 850 million already. I mean, you, you, you're there. You're really basically there, uh, Mr. Schroeder.
Moon, let me, let me just tell you, I, I spoke at the lobby conference a week ago and, uh, in preparing, you know, it's always difficult to figure out, how do you, how do you talk about numbers in public, you know? Um, and, and you've known me a long time. I'm, I'm just a common sense kind of guy. I, I don't use big million dollar words. I, I like using nickel words. And, um, and I came up with two slides that a kindergarten can understand. And one of them is government's growing at a, at a, at a rate of 9%. Uh, the economy's growing at roughly less than 3%. And your income is growing about 1%. And, and if we don't change that picture, I don't care how much tax money you give Louisiana, when government's outpacing the economy two and a half times, it's, it doesn't work. Just doesn't work.
By the way, it doesn't, it doesn't work for us either. If my income's growing 1%, the economy's growing 3%, a little less than 3, and the government's growing 9%, it's no way for those numbers to work. They can talk about balancing the budget, and I really think it's amazing as I watch this, John, they're talking about, well, Republicans don't want to give, uh, Edwards a win for reelection, but it's really the flip. Edwards wants to win. Edwards wants all this stuff for reelection. He wants, he knows he's going to get people to write, hey, he balanced the budget. First time Bobby General never did it. And that's what this is about from their side. They flip it and say that's what Republicans are trying to do. But Republicans in the House, and you were there, were trying to stop this even during the general years for the most part. And, and they're trying to do the same thing, but boy, when you read the press, I mean, they just, they were relentless against the House Republicans.
No, thank God. We have a few, a few people in the media who, who understand it and, and, and support what the House Republicans are trying to do. But Moon, you are a minority.
Oh, I know I am. I know I am.
When you, when you read, I, I hope I never read another Jim Beam article as long as I live. I mean, come on. I don't, I don't know where he gets his information. Somebody sent me an article the other day. That's why I've tried to come, come up some very elementary, uh, examples of what government does. And, and, and they're clearly growing much, much faster than the economy and your personal income. I would like to see, and I'm going to have a meeting this afternoon with some legislators, I want to see, I want to see somebody file a bill, and I think this bill's coming, that will not allow the state government, uh, economy to grow faster than a private sector economy. Because you can't feed the beast enough, you know? It has to grow at a slower pace. Um, the governor said last year in our budget, when I was in the House and sat on a budget committee, that he liked the idea of spending 98% of the forecast of what the revenue was forecast for the year, but he just didn't want to do it now.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's time to do it now. And, and I, I, I thought about this last week, Moon, and I think you're going to agree when I tell you this. If we don't ever get out of crisis mode, we're never going to turn the corner. Every penny we find, we spend. We spend every penny we think we have, every penny we think we're going to get. And if we, if we don't turn that tide and start putting some very conservative practices in place now, then we're not going to be anywhere 20 years from now. We're, we're constantly going to be chasing our tail because government grows faster than the economy.
Yeah, but when the government's growing two and a half to three times faster than the economy, and I read again, the old gas taxes right around the corner again. And it just frustrates me, you know, you mentioned Beam. Beam this week, uh, when he's not praising Edwards, he goes after, uh, John Kennedy and Jeff Landry. And you know, he, he writes pieces to bomb them. I mean, it's, it's so biased. And I say, you know, they're talking about Washington politics coming in. The Washington press corps has moved here. They picked up their Obama, John Bell Edwards, and then they bomb anybody that gets by him, and they don't care about the truth. And it's, that's what you meant by, when you said I was in the minority because really, I don't know if anybody else is talking about this. They may be, I'm not every single place, but I don't know if anybody trying to challenge what's going on.
No, because John Bell just comes off as a nice, good old boy who wants to do right.
Well, let me tell you something. Look at the policies. Only thing I get out of him is taxes and LGBT. I don't hear anything else. I'm just telling you what I hear. Those are the only two things I ever hear come out of his mouth.
Uh, look, I totally agree. And the other thing, the, the other slide, so, so that was my first slide. The second slide, I had them put it in, 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 in red, white and blue colors, um, where we are from a, a budget in comparison to our previous years. And you know, this current year that we're in right now, we're going to spend more money than we ever had in the history of our budgets.
Wow. Say that, say that again. I want you to say that again so people can hear that.
In the 17, 18 fiscal year, which we're in currently right now, that ends in June, or the end of June, um, is the highest budget we've ever had. At least my data takes it back to, um, I think 2002, 2003. Um, now they might've had something higher, but I doubt it very seriously. So the, the budget that's proposed with the fiscal cliff now, without that 900 million that he wants, will be the third highest budget since 2002.
Gee whiz.
If you give them the 900 million, it'll be the most money the state has ever spent in its budget.
By the way, if you've got a slide or, or you can get Sarah to send me that, I'd sure like to get it.
Well, we'll send it to you.
Yeah, if you send it on the email deal, I'd sure like to open that up and explain that because that, that needs to be talked about a lot, uh, John. Because once again, you're not going to pick it up and read it in the Jim Beam piece or Avica. You're not going to see it online. You just don't see those kind of things. And, and that's a lot of money.
The thing that I want to do, and Moon, you've heard me talk about this for years about being transparent and it will help us be accountable. If, if we can't get, I've always said, driving the conversation, if we couldn't pass a bill, even under Bobby General, when we were pushing for, for fiscal reforms and we couldn't get them, we are at least exposing it, enforcing the conversation and driving the conversation. So this, all this talk now about this Louisiana checkbook, I think is the greatest thing since sliced bread because at least people will see it. And we'll see it in elementary ways that is going to tick people off.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and, and people have asked, okay, so how you like being treasurer? Well, you know, um, now, now I'm sort of inside the circle whereas I was outside before. I thought I knew all, uh, what we need to do and, and the problems that we had. Now I'm inside looking at it, you know, and it's just a different culture.
John, can you, can you hold on, uh, take a quick break and come back for another seven, eight minutes? You got time?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's, uh, State Treasurer John Schroeder, newly elected, and, uh, talking about the budget. John's been there, been through the, the fights and he's got a great sense of what's going on. And we're going to visit with him a few more minutes when we get back. You're listening to the Moon Graffon Show. Don't go anywhere, folks. We just cranking up. Hello, welcome back, Moon Graffon Show. Great to have you with us. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. State Treasurer John Schroeder, my special guest, a guy who's been working with budgets and all that for a long, long time. And, uh, he's right in the dad middle of this one as well. And John, like I said, don't forget to send those numbers to me because we'll use them and to put them out there. I know nobody else is going to use real numbers, but, uh, we, we want people to just have the truth before they raise too many taxes. And I, I don't think the Republicans are going to allow them to raise too many taxes. I think they're, they're looking at about a half cent on the sales tax. I think that's part of it. You just mentioned 300 million. Look at all prices now. That's going to bring some windfall, 100 million, 150, 200, depending on what that is. I mean, and we spend, the bottom line is we're spending more money. We're spending more money than our economy can produce. And I think you've been preaching this. I know Brett Gama has been preaching this. Lance, I mean, y'all been preaching, you, 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 your, your economy can only produce so much government. That's the fact, Jack.
Well, so now we're working on, how, how do you get that message out, you know? And I was, and Sarah's sitting in, in here with me, so she'll, she'll send it over to you. But, you know, I was talking with Sarah. Sarah, we need to figure out a very elementary way to show it to people. We've been saying it for years. So social media's changed everything as we all know, so let's put it out there. So we've come up with some very simple slides that will go up today, um, on my Facebook today, probably this evening. I'm waiting to hear what the governor has to say today. And we'll, we'll, we have a post coming this evening. Uh, but we'll send those to you, but you know, we just got to keep beating the drum. Uh, that's all we can do, Moon.
Yeah, no doubt about it. I just, I just, I just want people to know the truth, and I think you do too. I mean, you notice the other thing that they don't talk about, you know, Jim Beam, the press. Uh, nobody talks about, when is it the government's turn to cut back? You know, when the governor, when the governor put out, we cut 600 million, then it was 672, then it was 981. Everybody that had any sense knows the governor never cut anything. Cause if he had have cut 650 million or 672 or, you know yourself, people would have been holling from the rooftops. They'd have been shouting. All of a sudden, he cut that much? Nobody knew? Was, is he that kind of genius?
Right. Well, well, Moon, look, you know me a little better than most people. I'm an entrepreneur. I, I've done a little bit of everything, real estate development, retail. And you know what? In business, I am tired of making difficult decisions only to turn around and watch government not have to do the same. Why do I have to live to a different standard? Why do you and I and the people of Louisiana always have to be the one that take the sacrifice? But the numbers prove that government continues to grow. If we give the governor once he, what he wants, we'll spend the most money in the history of our state.
Yeah.
And I'm sick and tired of it.
Yeah, no doubt about it. It's, it's just that we do spend a ton of money, but nobody wants to give from the other side. And I think you, you made a good point. I'm sure your numbers show, our economy is at a certain level, our income, by the way, we one of the only incomes that have been going down. And our income level's down, our jobs aren't there. We hadn't created any jobs since he's been in office, the job. And even Tyler Bridges pointed that out. There's really been no job creation. But yet they still want that money. Look at what the, 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 the Trump tax cut. Now all of a sudden, that money's going to go back to them and they, they, they're not saying, hey, let me give you the money back. By the way, John, when they had a so-called quote surplus, 100 million last year and 100 million this year, uh, 124 million, whatever it is, why don't they give us that money back? If they, if they, they want to do something, give us that money back. That's the 300 million right there.
Yeah, well, let, let me just make sure that, that the public understands the surplus that came from, from last year was 100, oh, 99 million of it came from the rainy day.
Correct.
So if, if, it's like you taking 99 thou, 99 million dollars out of your savings account, sticking it in your checking account, all of a sudden saying you have a surplus. So I've told the conservatives in the House, y'all better, y'all, y'all better argue for putting that 99 million right back in the rainy day because that's where you took it from.
Good point.
So I mean, I don't, the, the law's going to require that they put 25%, but you can put all of it. That's just what the constitution mandates. So, I mean, I, I would, I'm going to argue and I'm going to continue to, to push my former colleagues to put every dime of it into, back in the rainy day, or at least what they took out of it because it's down to less than, I think, 250 million dollars.
You're telling me, you're telling me last year they used one-time money again?
Well, the, the, you can take, um, that money and stick it into the general fund for general, you know, general obligations.
Okay, okay. Well, but it, but it was one-time money because it was in the general fund. You can't use it again.
Yeah, but the money's there. I, I think the RAC has, has, and, and don't quote me on this, but I think the, the Revenue Estimating Committee, uh, because you can go get, get it. Um, and it depends on if you're in a deficit and all that kind of stuff. We're going to get way over complicated. The bottom line, I think the story on that is we really didn't have a surplus of 127 million dollars. It's more like 27 million.
Well, but it looks good when the press will put it out there. They do. They put it out there as facts all the time. State Treasurer John Schroeder. John, thanks, man. God bless. We'll talk to you again very soon.
Thank you, Moon.
All right, bud. All right, take a quick break. More to come. Moon Graffon Show, I got that, school shooting, all that stuff when we get back. Hi y'all, welcome back, Moon Graffon Show. Great to have you with us. 844-766-6607. Hickson has it. Hotline, if you'd like to be part of the program. Appreciate, uh, our new State Treasurer, John Schroeder. Our guest Jim Beam, I'll beat on him next. By the way, Beam this weekend, Brandon. Same old crap. I mean, it's getting old with anybody that's following this. It's, it's, it's not that hard to find. Beam rips Jeff Landry and, uh, John Kennedy. Why? Because they picking on Edwards. They picking on Edwards. You know, we, you can't pick on Edwards. You can, we're going to defend him. This is the Washington press. The Washington press has moved where? To Louisiana. They won't challenge Bill Edwards on nothing that he's doing. And they're not going to. So the Deputy Sec, Press Secretary and then, and then, uh, my buddy, uh, Tyler Bridges is out there again. Now they're saying they want a standstill budget, Brandon. Now they want a standstill budget this year. They didn't want it last year because they got new taxes last year. Now they want it because they got the amount of taxes they need. In other words, give us what we, what we have. And I think the 300, according to Schroeder, 315 million dollars. And you heard it right, your federal tax break, if you itemize, they're going to punch you in the face. You're just not going to get the breaks that you were getting. Now, uh, your federal tax cut savings may help to fill the billion budget gap. And, and there's only one way to get that money, folks. We got to understand this. Donald Trump, and the Republicans, no Democrats, gave us a tax break. And a lot of people are getting the breaks and a lot of people are giving Trump credit. Rightfully so. So we come to Louisiana. Well, we got it so screwed up here, it's going to cost us 315 million. Where do you think that money's coming from, folks? That money's coming out of the tax break that you got from Trump. I'm just telling you, the tax breaks that you got going to be taken away by the state of Louisiana. They don't have to even vote on it. It happens automatically. Of course, state officials are only estimating 226. They're low balling it. That's, that's, the tax changes has led to an increase in revenue at the state level because of the way our taxes are tied to the federal tax liability. This came out of James Richardson, Dr. Richardson. The state will essentially get a portion of your tax cut. That's the bottom line. The increase in state taxes were varied by income levels and probably range from just tens of dollars to a few hundred more for each taxpayer. State officials said the increase would equal just a fraction of the federal cuts because the state's top tax rate is only 6%. Taxpayers wealthy enough to itemize. Now let me, let me stop you there. How many of you people driving around this, this, Brandon, you can say yourself a wealthy guy. I'm not talking about spiritually, but just financially. I don't consider myself a wealthy guy. I consider myself a middle-class guy. You?
Yeah, a middle-class guy.
You itemize?
Yes.
Okay. Let me explain what they do. Taxpayers wealthy enough to itemize, they calling you wealthy.
Oh, man.
Brandon, Mike Foster on this program called me wealthy if you make over $80,000. I'm telling you what they're doing. It's a slap against the middle class, but that's not what the newspapers do. The press and the pro Edwards press calls you wealthy. But you notice they never describe the wealthy. But I'm telling you what the wealthy is. Anything over about 40, 50,000 dollars, they think you're flat rich. This is what they're doing. So they don't say people making X amount of, the taxpayers wealthy enough to itemize. You don't have to, Brandon, you don't, I don't consider myself wealthy, but I itemize. You do too. I mean, come on, folks. This is what we dealing with. So you get a break and the governor and Louisiana takes it and they don't have to even vote on it. Taxpayers wealthy enough to itemize deductions for home mortgages. It's because you got a home mortgage, don't make you wealthy. You got a home mortgage and you write the deductions off. All of a sudden, you wealthy? Uh, property taxes, charitable donations would fill a bigger pinch. That's nice. Now all of a sudden, we taking money away from charitable organizations. This is Louisiana, folks. Bass acquits. About 450,000 Louisianers are roughly 25% of the state tax, taxpayers itemized deductions in 2015 IRS data shows. And let me see, if we go with these numbers again, Brandon. Folks, it's of taxpayers, it's 25% of tax filers. And I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll bet you anything you want to bet that is not 25% of the taxpayers. I'll bet you, and I'm not a betting man, anything you want to bet is closer to 45 to 50% of taxpayers that are getting this. They played these numbers when we did the Stelly bill. A taxpayer and a tax filer are two different things. Example, let me give it to you again, and I'm hoping Bill Edwards and them are listening. And I hope the people in the press are listening. Not you, Jim Beam or, or, uh, or my buddy, uh, Hillburn, because they won't understand it. I had kids one time that were in college, Brandon, and they work a little job. And because they didn't make as much money, they were tax filers. They had to file taxes. Brandon, you know they got all their money back? You did too. Most of us did. That is a tax filer, Brandon. If, if you paid, I mean, let me keep this simple. If you paid $200 in income taxes last year and you got back about $200, you are not an income taxpayer. You are a filer, but you're not a payer. Now everybody listening to this program that ever had kids, they know what I'm talking about. Okay? So I don't consider them a taxpayer. I consider them a income tax filer. That's where they getting the 25% number at. They saying, well, the taxpayer. No, no, no. Tax filers are different than taxpayers. And I'm telling you, me and Lyle Miller, God bless him, I might see if I can get Lyle back on. Me and Lyle Miller had all the numbers on the Stelly bill when we were fighting that, that a taxpayer and a tax filer were totally different. And the taxpayers in this state are about 45 to 50% of us that are paying income taxes. And got, and got deducted. It's not 25%. The reason they use that, they were using 20%, at least they opted 5%. The reason they like to use that number is because they play, it's called class warfare. They playing the other 75% of tax filers against the 25% taxpayers. When really a tax filer shouldn't even be considered. Look at income taxpayers and you will find in this state, it's about 45% of us pulling the wagon when it comes to income taxes. It's not the 25% and I'll go to my grave fighting this for y'all because I know what they doing. They playing with numbers. You're losing it. And they play with these dang numbers. They do this all the time. They did, they do it with the Stelly tax cut. How that was tax reform? That was a tax swap to pop people that itemize. And that number used to be, Brandon, about 45 or 50%, the same number. It's exactly the same number. Folks, I'll stand by this. Matter of fact, I'm going to have to go now prove it and get the information out and put it out for people. It's just pitiful, the game they play in the press, the pro Edwards press. The bottom line is Trump gave us a tax break and the state of Louisiana is going to take it from you, take some of it from you. That's what they're doing. And that's what they always do. They never are satisfied with the amount of money they're getting. And you heard Schroeder talk about, our government's grown right at 9%, our economy's grown right under 3%, and, uh, the, uh, our income's grown at 1%. Now how does government, who doesn't produce anything, how do they get the biggest part of the budget? Folks, there's no talk about cutting and stopping the growth. They are wide open. And now they, now they back with the, the gas tax. They back with the gas tax and we didn't even spend money on roads when we gave them money back in 1990s. The fact is, they didn't spend the money on the proper things. They didn't fix the roads. And that's why we, we are like we are now. And I guarantee you, if they get the money, a lot of us can go payroll, retirement systems and things of that nature. Now, a gentleman walked in earlier today, Brandon, you know, I'm talking about, without saying the name, said the best thing to do if they're going to do gas tax is, if in three to five years, show us what roads are going to be finished. And if they're not, we take the money back. But the problem with that is, I think they ought to show us what they've done with the money in the past. It's just frustrating to watch them down there get away with all this stuff. And they get away with it because we have nobody else covering this but me. Because, and I don't, by the way, that's not to pat myself on the back. I wish everybody covered it and covered it right, but they don't. And, and they don't, they don't want to cover it right. There's so much money down in Baton Rouge. It's not funny. And, and the sad thing is they want more. They want all of it. They want all of it. And that's a shame. They can't have it all. But they're going to try to get every penny because we look around and we don't worry about it. Because we do have a lot of poor people in this, in this state. And a lot of people, you know, hurting in this state. And they want to drive a wedge between the people that are pulling the wagon. They want more people to jump on the wagon and less people to pull. We have a spending problem. Don't ever forget that. We have a spending problem in the great state of Louisiana and we never addressed that. Not cable, not lobby, not the task force. Nobody ever jacks with it. Unbelievable. Anyway, take a break. Be right back. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. By the way, Hickson Autoplex, Autoplex in Alexandria on Friday. Look forward to seeing you. We'll take a break, be right back. Hi y'all, welcome back, Moon Graffon Show. Great to have you with us. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline, if you'd like to be part of the program. By the way, when we get back, I know as a students, they said enough's enough. They going to Washington. They want to stop. They want gun control. And, and I'm telling y'all, one day they're going to probably get it, but the emotional stuff, I know it's tough. I know they hurting. You don't know what they're going through. No, I don't. You're right. I don't. But I know this, taking guns away from me is not going to help the situation. Arming us, uh, our, uh, arming schools with the right people can stop this. And I said that on Thursday. You have to now arm people at the schools, making dang sure if, and plus this guy, the FBI should have had him. Mental disorders are unbelievable. That's happened a lot in our country now. And a lot, a lot of things that, uh, are going on is, I mean, it's just bad. But my God, you can't say, okay, let's disarm the country now. That's not what we need. That's not an answer. You know, that's what we do. When we have a hurricane come through, everybody gets billions of dollars. They throw money at everything. Nobody knows where it goes. Same thing with this. You know, I would like for all of our kids to feel safe at school, but I'm just telling you that what they doing is, and look, the left loves it. What are they going to tell these kids now? That's, that's, and that's being pushed by the left. You can book it. That, that normally happens. All right, we'll get to that in the second hour of the program. Got a lot of stuff in the second hour of the program we'll get to. Including the gas taxes. Here they come again, you know? And it's just answers that, we've got to get to some answers before we can start talking about taxes. And unfortunately, that's not what anybody wants to do on the left. They just want more money, more money. Folks, we're going to Folks, we gonna run out of money one day. You and me individuals are gonna run out of money, making sure our state government has enough. Uh, Tyler Bridges back. Uh, after chronic budget problems, it's time for Louisiana lawmakers to look at tax reform. One of the things, by the way, this wasn't Tyler, the next one's Tyler. The, one of the things they said in the article, but at least the governor has tried. Oh, the governor's tried. Well, if he's tried, I mean, heck, he's tried. That's good enough. The old governor's tried. Tried to take every penny we got, but he's tried. That's, that's what the editorial page of the Advocate came up with. At least he's tried. Said, this is frustrating time for the governor who has supported a variety of taxpayers, some of them unwise in our view, that have typically been bottled up by the ways and means by hostile leadership in the House. There they go again. House Republicans hostile leadership because they won't improve every dang tax that they want. That's how, that, you know, that's how you get a hostile name now? Just don't, just don't want to increase taxes and you, all of a sudden, you the bad guy. Or lady. Speaker Taylor Barak presides over a sharply divided GOP caucus that can't unify, unify around tax reform plans that its own task force has recommended. By the way, they can unify. The governor don't unify. Why don't we flip it? Why don't the governor and the Democrats come along with the House Republicans? We've been going along with John Alario and the left, the left Republicans and Democrats for 10 years and are wrong now. Folks, I've been watching this. I know what I'm talking about. We've been wrong with John Alario and that whole gang. We've been going along with them for 10 years and it's a problem. And the House Republicans are getting blamed for what the other side did. Does this not sound like Washington press has come down to Baton Rouge? They keep getting blamed hostile, using words like hostile, you know? Hostile leadership in the House. Barak, we had him on last week. He can't sharply divide a GOP caucus. It's not sharply divided. You got the conservatives and you got the nut nuts. You got the conservatives and you got the yellow bellies. They go along with the Democrats. That's amazing. If they go along with the Democrats and the left and John Alario and Francis the feet Thompson, they're the heroes. We've been going along with those guys. They have screwed the state up. These are the guys that were around for all this stuff. Hi, and, and the press will never write, they ought to say, oops, we made major mistakes. And that ought to be the headlines tomorrow. And they ought to go back and apologize for people. Hey, it's been the Senate's budget. It's been the more liberal budget. It's been the more liberal spending. That's been the problem. Not the House Republicans who are trying to hold a line on spending when you find out the economy's growing at three times less than what government's growing? And our incomes are down? This doesn't make any sense, folks. Common core math can't fix this. As far as the Republicans sharply divided, they're not sharply divided. There's a few nut nuts. And they go along with the Democrats. You know? Who are the ones that Jim Bean pushed? Julie Stokes, the, the woman, the, the, the Lady J. Darden. Barry Ivey. I hate raising taxes, Rob Chandwa. Of Rasta, I hate, you know, I hate raising taxes. These are liberal, liberal, liberal Republicans. Who can't win unless they run as Republicans and they know it. That's what the, that caucus is not bad. There's a few of them in there that are bad and they go along with the left. Sharply divided GOP, it's full of crap. And then they said they can't unify them around a tax reform plan that its own task force recommended. Folks, the task force, how many times I need to go over this? The task force was put together, you had Republican control, honored it. But when they put the people on the task force, they were all people that worked for government. Goody two shoe government groups that never do anything. People that are paid to be on the government task force. Alario put three. John, Jay Darnes on the task force for God's sakes. But they keep going back to the task force. Governor Bill Edwards didn't even want to use what the task force came out last year, same task force. He went with this stupid cat program. But they don't dog him for not going last year with this. Not at all, because that's not, they taking aim on Republicans in the House. It's all they doing is taking aim on them. You know, it's just, it's just ridiculous that they taking aim on them. And they already, without doing anything, without lifting a finger, are gonna be better. 320, 15 million dollars better in the budget because of the tax cuts that Trump gave. By the way, if you look up and you lost your tax cut, don't blame Donald Trump. You're really getting it. People are getting it in their paychecks. It's the government, it's the legislature, it's the governor. They set this thing up like this. You got businesses here, the oil and gas industry getting beat up by lawyers every day, the trial lawyers that Bill Edwards is so close to. We got companies leaving. We got out migration problem. Our income is down. Folks, I'm telling you, problems that we gotta fix. And as government can't fix any of the problems that I'm talking about if they keep trying to tax people to prosperity. They not helping the situation, they're killing the situation. They're driving people's incomes down. They're driving businesses out of this state and all in gas industry. People are going with the jobs and we got a governor and a co-governor, Jay Darden, and the Democrats and some of these Republicans like John Alario, who are going along with, with destroying the state. They're destroying the state. And now we got the willing media going along with them. And people are moving on, they had to go to work every single day. And look what they doing. The answer is me and you to pay more in tax. And then they gonna pound the people who are paying all the income taxes, about 45% of it. It's not 25. That's tax filers. Trust me, there's a big difference between tax filers and taxpayers. Just telling you, there's a gigantic difference and they know it and they don't tell you the truth. I'm here, all I got on my side is the truth. I have nothing else. It's 45% to 48% of these people like me and Brandon are taxpayers. We're not tax filers. We don't file taxes and get our money back. They know it. Dick Stelly and them knew that when they ran that crap. The press knows it, they don't change it. No, 25%. That's playing class warfare. We got 45% of us pulling the weight, pulling the wagon, and they want to pound on us. That's the business owners. That's the people in this state who are, who are starting businesses and making investments. Folks, what they trying to do to us is sinful. And what the mainstream press is doing is even worse. All right, we gotta take a break. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. When we get back, much more to come, including now the kids are going to Washington DC and they want gun control. We'll get back on all that right after this break. Oh, welcome back. Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. Uh, we will be in, uh, in Alexandria, conjunction with KSYL 970 AM. Of course, our friends at Sandler Broadcasting will be with Dallas Hickson, Hickson Autoplex on Friday. So just letting y'all know, we will make a little road right. There is a chance I will be gone another day. It's important, uh, no, I'm not fishing. It's important and, and if I, if I have to be, then, uh, we'll, we'll get Mark Pope to sit in for me. You're laughing with us.
What you're saying is you could be going two days this week?
Yeah, you happy?
No, Rob might throw a party in there.
Rob might be excited. Well, I might throw a party before I go. And I say, Rob, what you throwing the party for? He said, because I heard you're not gonna be here Friday. Rob will let me enjoy the party of me not being here. All in fun, folks, all in fun. Anyway, 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. Uh, if you'd like to be part of the program, it's, it's your opportunity to be a voice. Now, by the way, there was talk of the governor and them wanting a budget that was, uh, standstill, which is what the legislature tried to do last year, but they want it now because of the, they already got their money. They got plenty of money, folks. That thing's loaded with money in Baton Rouge, all this stuff about we don't have, we don't have. All that $600 million cutting in 672, all bogus. And, uh, I'm gonna stick with that. All right, I may come back to this in a minute, but I do want to talk a little bit about, I, I was reading the article and I'm aware of the shooting, the guy, you know, mentally deranged, goes in and kills innocent students. And, and I made a comment the other day, you know, when you send a kid to school, and I sent two every day, God forbid. And everybody thinks that. And I don't want to think when I send a kid to school, this can happen. You don't either. And, and the people at Parkland, the students, they didn't that day either. And I'm sure just getting over that is gonna be tough. I, I, I don't want to imagine. I don't want to go through it. You don't either. Nobody does. Nobody wants to go through what those young people went through. And by the way, not just young people, teachers. We saw a coach get killed. A coach would have had a gun, getting in front of those students might have been a different, it would have been a different ballgame because he'd have been shooting back. And the answer is definitely to have guns on campus with, uh, lots of teachers and custodians that are always on campus. Coordinated, coordinated and trained. What definitely is the answer. No doubt about it. The answer's not gun control. But these young students now all want to go protest and go to DC and protest so we don't, they say this will never happen again. Well, uh, I read one article that, oh, I know Senator Troy Carter. I just want to share this with you. Now, I'm gonna show how stupid this is. By the way, he's a state senator here. You may be aware, it was reported in our local press, I wrote in pass legislation in 1992, creating a gun-free zones around schools in Louisiana to prevent exactly what we witnessed in Florida yesterday. Now, this is a Democrat leftist senator. Troy Carter, who's bragging about how he in 1992 wrote the law will have gun-free zones where the school, Mr. Carter, was a gun-free zone. The laws don't work. You cannot murder or shoot anybody. That's a law. You can't kill anybody. It's a law. It didn't work. Nobody's worried about your stinking law and this guy's bragging that he created the law, got to stop. He says this, listen. He says, I passed legislation in 1992, creating a gun-free zone around schools in Louisiana to prevent exactly what we are witnessing in Florida yesterday. Well, that didn't stop anybody. It wouldn't stop anybody here. Nearly 26 years later, to the day, we have no excuses but a senseless violence in places where our children require peace and concentration. Well, what about in the inner cities, Mr. Carter? What kind of law did you pass to stop the fighting and killings in inner cities? In the countries, in the rural areas? Murder is murder. The biggest thing we need to do, the biggest thing we need to do is protect them. And protecting them by putting up a law that says no guns, movie theaters, you can't have a gun. That's not working. Want to protect our kids? Make sure we got people who can shoot back. It's that, it's that simple. It's sad to say that, I know. But it's gotta be that simple. Because we don't need to have this anymore. But did we getting into the gun argument? And we getting into the emotional side? Now the kids are gonna want them more. They want them more. And some, trust me, folks, these young kids, and I'm not saying they're not smart because they probably are, Brandon. Somebody's behind them. George Soros will come up with the money to get it to them to push to get rid of guns. He's heavy in the Democrat Party. Democrats are all about gun control. You know, it's sad though, the people that want gun control, the liberal Democrats. Don't get me wrong, folks, this keeps happening. You're gonna have conservative Christians and everybody else that wants gun control not thinking of the big picture. And I thought about it the other day. I was driving back the other day and I thought, wow, we gonna have gun control or no guns one day. They're gonna take it away from the law-abiding citizens that do the right thing, which are 98.9% of all gun owners. That means I gotta pay a price. For what a mentally insane person did, instead of just making sure that if somebody comes in and open fire, we got people shooting back at them. I mean, I'm just trying to, just trying to understand this. I really am. So I thought about this. By the way, look at my Facebook post, said Moon Graffon, so you can comment on it. And it deals with babies in the womb and abortion. Well, I ain't got nothing to do with gun control, Mr. Graffon. There you go. That's already been settled. Killing babies, 60 million. We don't get upset about that. We're not mad we killed 60 million babies because of Democrat leftist politics. Well, you're pregnant, go kill a baby. And blacks ought to be real upset because they've got a big percentage that are blacks. And they vote Democrat all the time. And I thought about that. I said, man, we got this thing backwards. If we're not gonna protect a baby's life at the beginning of that baby coming into this world, why do you think we're gonna be able to protect them later? We're not even protecting them. We did not only not protecting them, we got laws saying it's okay to kill a baby. And we, and yeah, we should be worried about the schools and we know how to stop that. We can stop the killings before the babies come out, if we get rid of abortion. But we're not and nobody's upset? There's not one person sitting and listening to this program around this whole country? Better be thank God that it, that, that you weren't aborted. You didn't, you wouldn't have had a choice. Right now, we got choices and a way to protect these kids. And all they talking about is we need to get rid of guns because somebody's psycho's out. I mean, I, Brandon, I don't know if you read, I read a lot of these, it was only him. I think his brother was in a psychiatric ward. This guy's been trying to get help. The FBI had some stuff on him that came from a broken home. Very messed up. Unfortunately, and it took the lives of innocent people. But nobody shooting back, not one person shot back. I, I, you cannot try to explain to me what goes through the mind of a person that could pick up a gun and shoot anybody anytime, any day. Man, when you start talking about walking into school and shooting little children, I mean, that blows my mind because I don't understand the mindset. I could never, and I think it's satanic myself. It's gotta be. Well, you don't care shooting people? But you know, y'all don't want to talk about the spiritual world because we kicked Jesus out, we kicked Christianity out. But there's also an evil one running around and nobody wants to talk about that. So nobody talks about that kind of stuff. We talk about gun control. Gun control. Gun control on people who had nothing to do with the shooting. And the people that want gun control are ones that have helped kill 60 million babies that never got to touch their foot or feet or toes on this earth and been wiped out by the same people that say, well, we gotta have gun control. Is that so? Somebody just made a point, they need to take cell phones from teenagers because cell phones kill more people than guns. They probably do on the road. Oh, man, we get to these emotional issues and everybody's talking about them and nobody deals with reality. And that's the frustrating thing to me. We're not, these young kids want, we want to protect ourselves. Y'all need to make laws, watch it to be Republicans that'll get pounded in an election because they don't want gun control because we don't look past our nose. Somebody said call the shootings retroactive abortion. See if that, there's a difference. You know, by the way, Brandon, you realize if somebody, you kill somebody that's, that's pregnant, or shoot somebody that's pregnant, baby dies, you get, you go to jail for murder of the baby in the womb, but you can go to somewhere and get the baby taken out and killed? We talking about gun control? We talk, we made abortion a choice, a choice. Well, it's the law of the land. I've heard that from people tell me and email me and text me. It's the law of the land, move on. I'll have somebody email me, it's the law of the land, move on. We settled abortion. Killing 60 million babies? Ask somebody, would they have rather been aborted? Or would you rather go down in a school shooting? Most people would say in a school shooting. God, I hate school shootings. Breaks my heart. Drop my kids off this morning and, and your mind, you just go, wow. I didn't live it, I understand that. But who's speaking for those babies? And the same people that want these, to, to stop the guns are the same liberal nuts that says killing the baby's okay. It's okay. It's okay to kill a baby. They vote Democrats, I'm a better, I had one, I'm a better Christian than you and I'm a Democrat. And I go, well, your problem is you comparing it to me. Don't compare it to me. Kill 60 million babies, no problem. it to me. Don't compare it to me. Kill 60 million babies, no problem. Then the school shooting come along, now we're gonna march on Washington for gun control. You watch. One day when it gets here, people are gonna trip out. We gotta take a break. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. We'll take a break and be right back. Hi, y'all. Welcome back. Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. All right, Brandon. All right, let's go to a call. I got a call on air. Who am I speaking with?
Uh, Richard.
Richard, how you doing, man? Go ahead. Richard, I got a little problem with the phone, so I'm just, I'm just gonna go straight to the phones, and people can get on, so go ahead.
Okay. I'm looking at this, and this guy was not supposed to be on campus, allowed on campus with a backpack. You don't have to go to Washington to get the answer. Go down to the principal's office and ask the principal how the killer got on campus, and to the classrooms with a backpack. And you can start all this conversation from there.
Yeah, you got, well, the thing about backpacks, you know, that is the kind of the, my, my son went to school today with three backpacks. He had one with his books, and one with, and two of them with baseball stuff in it. He had three backpacks. So, everybody's got backpacks on campus now.
Yeah, this guy was not supposed to be allowed on campus with a backpack. I want to know how you got on campus with a backpack. What kind of security do they have, is what I'm driving at?
Yeah, no, but don't you believe that if we had ex-military, former policemen, maybe working, and other people, other people armed? Don't you think that's the real answer? Instead of taking your guns and my guns and Brandon's guns, don't you think the real answer is let's, let's be able to shoot back, and let's see how many campus killings and shootings we have then?
That's the real answer, Moon, but you gotta get to the, to the question. They're going to Washington. They can't control that.
No. Well, I'm just telling you, it's an emotional plea with the press and the left. We're wiping out 60 million babies, a million a year, but that's, that's not a big deal to them. They wouldn't even be here.
No, no, and I, and I watched all the, the bits on TV with the emotional kids, and I understand the emotions from the kids.
Sure, sure.
But that's, that's coming from who's teaching them.
Yeah, but we need to come up with grown-up answers. This is gonna be grown-up answers. And the grown-up answer is that we need to toughen up and make sure it doesn't happen at any school anymore. The way we gonna do that is, doesn't mean it's never gonna happen. It's, we gonna cut down the deaths by having people in place to fight back. That's all it means. It doesn't mean it's not gonna happen. But let me ask you a question. It can happen at a grocery store. It can happen at a theater. It can happen at a, at a park. It can happen anywhere. There you go, Graffon, that's what we're talking about, about guns. No, we're talking about nuts. You don't take away the guns. Let me give you an example. Let me ask a question to you. Cars kill more people every year than guns even thought to kill. Why aren't we eliminating cars? Why don't we eliminate cars, let's say, one per family? Why don't we eliminate cars? I mean, let's, let's get rid of what's killing a lot of, and look at the injuries. Way more injuries than guns. Why don't we get rid of cars? You can only drive a car when you're 25 and up, and you cannot have more than one in the family. I'm just saying, if we're gonna go to extremes, let's go to extremes.
Yeah, well, that's, that's extreme. I just want to go to the basic question of what's your security? And then start the conversation from there.
Yeah. Well, the security is not much. You can, as you can tell, not a whole lot. All right, thanks for the call, man. Appreciate the call. Next caller, you on the air? Good morning.
Good morning, Moon. How you doing today?
Who's that? Who's this? Who am I speaking with?
This is Louis. How you doing?
Louis doing fine. Go ahead, brother.
I'm from Lafayette.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, the, the worst part about all of this is that all the public schools advertise to have somebody come in and shoot up people, because they say, this is a no-gun zone.
Hold up, though. Hold up just a second. Senator, Senator Troy Carter out of New Orleans. He's, he put on his Facebook, he passed legislation 1992, creating gun-free zones around schools in Louisiana to prevent exactly what we witnessed. I mean, this is a guy that's a state senator. Not, not exactly a brainiac, is he?
Well, he might be exactly stupid, but he's definitely not a brainiac, because, I mean, imagine if you had a bank, and the bank advertised, we just keep our money out. We don't put it in a safe.
Yeah, we keep-
We just have it on the counter.
Yeah, we keep-
You think anybody might go in to try to steal it?
I didn't think about greater, yeah, we got, we got money here, and we keep only cash where everybody can see it. And we don't have any guns. It's a gun-free zone. Anyway, good point. Gotta go. Thanks for the call. Yeah, that'd be intelligent. Hi, y'all. Welcome back. Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. If you'd like to be part of the program, it's your opportunity to be a voice. Yes, just reading that the kids have had enough. They want to be protected. They're going to Washington. They want gun control. Biggest devastation we've ever had in this country was planes flying into buildings. Folks, I know this stuff. I know, but in a free country, there's gonna be some dangers. There's just gonna be a lot of dangers. And you're not gonna make a perfect utopia. It's not gonna happen till Christ comes back and takes his people home. It's not gonna happen. So, if it's not gonna happen, we gotta look at stuff from a practical standpoint. We're gonna have some people nut up. They're gonna go shoot people. Not just here, they did it in restaurants, movie theaters. They do it every day, every night. And, and I know we gotta correct it. I know there's some things that need to be done, but the first thing we need to do is protect our kids at the school. When those kids walk on that campus, today they leave that campus, there ought to be people there protecting them. But we don't pay enough taxes. There we go, Brandon. Not enough money. I can hear that coming. That's why you gotta have people. There are coaches and people on every staff, I guarantee you a dozen of them or so, that would be glad to do a carry permit and train and do the things they need to do. No doubt. And that's the answer. You, I guarantee as military, can you imagine being in Shreveport, Boja City, where there's a military base, where you have a lot of retired people there that can handle stuff like that, walking on the campus, around outside the campus, in the hallways, always looking, always talking, befriending those kids, always, hey, this guy, I ain't seen this guy at school on the campus yet. Hey, son, what's your name? Now, let's do that, before we talk about getting rid of guns for people that have nothing to do with that. Let's go to the phone lines. Matter of fact, vehicles kill more than guns, a lot more. And so, nobody's talking about getting rid of vehicle. Well, that's not practical. Why, why is it not practical? So, practical is taking guns and killing babies before they're born? That's practical reason? So, oops, I'm pregnant. The practical thing to do is to kill the baby? That's practical? The Supreme Court says it's practical. Oh, well, then it's practical. Forget God, forget a baby. People out there can't have babies. People out there trying to adopt. Not enough babies to adopt. That's practical. Killing a baby's practical, for whatever gets here. That's not practical. That's downright sick. Let's go to Josh in Rain. How you doing, Josh?
Good, and you, bud?
Doing fine, sir.
Good, good. Uh, I was calling to say, this may sound kinda goofy, but would it be safe to put, like, medical detectors in schools for people to have to walk through in the mornings? Because I know, I graduated from Gaydon High School, and every now and then we, they would put a metal, metal detector in front of the doors, and we'd have to walk through that every morning, sometimes, you know, just for safety precautions.
Well, I mean, I think there are some schools with medical, uh, those detectors. I think there, there are some schools. As a matter of fact, all over the country, they've got them. Probably not in every school. But that's what you're getting down to. The problem is, a lot of time, it's not necessarily the student that's on campus. Sometimes it is. Sometimes the student's coming back, just walking on campus and shooting people. You remember Columbine, was it Columbine? That one of the, the mama, the kid came back and, and shot those elementary kids. Nobody-
You're talking about Newtown, there.
Newtown, that's it. Came back and shot-
Columbine was 19 years ago. Newtown was much more recent.
Newtown is the one I'm talking about. Newtown. Newtown is the one where they came in and shot these little babies. I mean, the guy didn't belong on campus. And if you ain't got a pass to get on camp, look, I'll tell you what. I'm not gonna mention the name, but my kid was in a, a Catholic school here, and if you, to get through the front gate, you had to buzz. They had to know who you were before they buzz you in. So, look, why don't we try that? Before we try gun laws to get rid of guns, students organizing marches and rally against the politicians, want gun control. By the way, the NRA is getting unjustly beat up on this. Every time there's a deal, they want the NRA out of it. The NRA is not about people shooting kids in schools. The NRA is about gun safety and teaching people how to properly use guns. And yet, they're gonna get beat up, because that's what the left does. But we don't ever fight back and say, what about abortion? You're killing all these babies. Anything else?
They got some, they got some crazy people out there, man. My God.
And some of them-
No, that, that's it. I just, you know, it was just a thought. Because I, I believe that it would be great for them to teachers and all that, but I think it's a, a long shot, you know? They'll probably never allow that to pass, you know?
They probably won't, because really, ultimately, they want the guns. If they allow, it's just like tax cuts. The Democrats didn't vote for it. Now it's passed, and people are getting tax breaks, and they like it. The Democrats didn't want to vote for it, because they wanted to tell people lies, that it is not gonna help families. Same thing here. If they let people protect the schools, and the schools get protected, they will lose the argument that we need to get rid of guns. And they don't want to ever lose the argument they need to get rid of guns. So, now, you got students calling politicians out on gun laws. That's what they want. Not one more gun, not one more gun control now. You ought to see the people in the parents putting up the deal. How about this? Thoughts and prayers will never be enough. That's the science people are holding up. It's just crazy. Anyway, gotta run. Appreciate the call. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. Who am I speaking with?
This is Jason in Shreveport.
Jason, how you doing, sir?
I'm doing great. I got a solution for this, uh, gun violence in schools. You know, there's a fire alarm, and there's a fire extinguisher, that says, break glass in case of emergency. You know, there's a fire extinguisher, whatever, 40 feet in the school. Why isn't there a break-in case of emergency police box? Where any teacher that has code can go up to the police box, type in the code, open the box, and retrieve the gun. And the police are automatically notified when you're punching the code, that you're getting that gun out.
Yeah.
You see what I mean? Anybody in the school that has the code could pull the gun. So, you have it on the cafeteria, gymnasium, first floor-
Well, I know, but I, I'd be a little careful, because somebody may figure out a way to get a gun while the gun's sitting there. I think not knowing who has a gun, besides a few law enforcement people walking around. Like, give me an example. Our church, there are now people walking around with guns, and there are a lot of them in the audience that have guns. In our church. And you will see the presence of guns when you walk in, walking around, just letting people know, if you try it, we're gonna fight back. Now, that don't mean the good law is not gonna protect us. I just think you gotta be, you gotta use some common sense.
The left is never gonna even agree that schoolteachers should carry guns. They'll never agree with that. So, meet them halfway, we say, well, we won't carry the gun, but we can keep it in a safe combination lockbox that's bolted into the wall, and only the teachers and principals have that code. And-
But you don't have to, because you, you, you need, you need to be an element of surprise example. We, we hit the heroics of the coach who jumped in front of the students and took the bullets while the kids were scaddling out. Had the coach jumped in front with a gun firing back, it'd have been a different story. Hopefully, it'd have been a different story. But it wasn't a different story. That's what I'm saying. I, I like, I like to not know who has a gun on campus, except for the ones that we see. And, look, it don't mean it's gonna be perfect. But I guarantee it'd be better than what we have now, and it would, it would definitely help to know that somebody can fight back. That's all. I think it's a simple answer for some of this, but we're not looking for simple answers. These people want to control guns. They want every gun. They want the NRA to pay for it. The NRA never killed anybody in a school shooting. Never have. But boy, I didn't know what the nuts are gonna say.
You know, in Australia, this hasn't stopped any of the school shootings and machete attacks in schools. It's still going on, and they took our guns away.
Let me ask you a quick question. Let me ask you a quick question. If, if, if you, how come liberals, somebody made a good point. How come liberals want to blame the gun and not the shooter? But if you get in a car accident and hurt somebody, they blame you and not the car?
Because Hillary, Hillary Clinton didn't say it.
Well, I know, you're right, but think about it.
Hillary Clinton said it was okay, then they jump on board with it.
The gun did-
They're in on it with Democrats.
Yeah, the gun did a killing. The person's not guilty. But if a car runs over, you DWI something, they blame the person in the car, but they don't blame the car. By the way, that's not really true.
They don't blame the telephone for the text message. You drive around text messaging and crash your car. They, they don't blame it on, they blame it on the person. Why don't we take away the phone? In the liberals' mind, we take the phone away from everybody.
Oh, no. The liberals would like no talk radio, no Drudge Report, no cell phones, no social media. They'd own it all. We would all believe Obama was a king, instead of a fool. We gotta go. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. Take a break. We'll be right back. Hi, y'all. Welcome back. Moon Graffon Show, great to have you with us. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. Hicksonhasit.com. Check them out. They'll fix you up every chance they get. By the way, the march is gonna be March for Our Lives against gun control. They want gun control. So, that's what they're gonna call it. The press will play it up. I wonder if we can have babies that aren't born March for Our Lives. Somebody just sent me, Andy just sent me a picture. Liberalism is a mental disorder. Oh, it's, it's a problem. There's no doubt about it. But, you know, folks, nobody, nobody. And, I mean, nobody. Without common sense stuff, nobody's gonna fix this. The scary part of this to me is, we had a lot of people fight to kill babies for a long time, and they passed it. We had a lot of people fight and changed the definition of marriage, and they passed it. And a lot of people fighting now, we can go in a boy, I used to laugh years ago, and I thought, nobody's gonna ever come over. The boy can go in a girl's bathroom, and girls can go in a boy's bathroom. Yet, we're on the verge of accepting all that stuff, too. Why shouldn't I believe they won't get the guns one day? And all you tough people, I'll never get it out of my hands. You never get it out of my hands unless I'm dead. I'm thinking, well, you go on and believe that when you got kids and all that stuff? That, they, one thing liberals do, they know how to play on a crisis. They know how to play on anything that's going really bad. You know, who was that? It was the mayor of Chicago, Rahm Emanuel. And he's the one that said, never let a crisis go to waste. And I'm telling you, every time something like this comes up, they get out there, and the crisis becomes way bigger. Once again, you didn't get shot. Nope. Your kid didn't lose your kid. You'd feel different. By the way, somebody made another good point, Brandon. No one blames the gun when a cop shoots people. No, they blame the person. That's what I'm saying. They blaming the guns. They blaming the guns. They go and march against the guns, and it was a nut, it was a nut job. The guy was a sicko. Unfortunately, he's just a, you know, just, nobody blames the guns when a cop out there looking for the policeman. By the way, Brandon, they had a, my son came down, like, Dad, let's watch the NBA. All -star game. So, I can't watch that crap. So, he, he comes on, and the lady that sung the National Anthem, who was that?
Fergie.
It was the worst edition since Roseanne Barr. That was horrible. I mean, horrendous. And then, he left, and he comes down, why you not watching the game? I said, nah, I ain't watching that mess. I said, that's an All-Star game. The only All-Star game that's good is baseball. Football and basketball's a joke. So, then they start saying, LeBron James has a right to say, he's earned the right to talk about these. So, Laura Ingraham apparently, after LeBron and KVD, Kevin Durant, went off on Trump. She, they wanted to stick their nose in politics, so she knocked their heads off. You know, they were crying, crying and squealing like little babies. They think they can go out there and say that, and nobody should say nothing to them. LeBron supported Hillary. He never said a word while Obama was president about what was going on in the inner cities. Not one word. Not one word of hell. Nothing. He's not said a thing when Barack Obama was president. But they've convinced everybody Trump's a racist and all that, and he's not. And, but they convinced everybody he is. So, guess what? He's a racist, and that's what they tell everybody. It's so crazy. It is so crazy to watch these. And LeBron's to the left, doesn't have a clue about what he's talking about. Well, she would show me the improvements in the inner cities when the great Barack Obama was president. He couldn't. Anyway. Anyway. All right, let's go to the phone lines. I don't know who's on the line. Hello, good morning. You're welcome to the Moon Graffon Show. What's your name?
My name is Benny.
Ben, go ahead.
Hey, listen, Moon, I've been listening to you all morning, just like I do every morning. And what you're saying is so true. You know, with regards to putting a civilian auxiliary, properly vetted, properly trained, veterans, retired policemen, so forth and so on. You know, all this stuff about gun control, you know, in my opinion, gun control is a good group on a target. That's gun control. Now, I would be willing, I'm retired, I'd be willing to sit on my duff four hours in front of any door- four hours in front of any door they wanna put me in, every day, to protect these children.
You know what, but I think most retired veterans and policemen and military people would do it, and never even bat, bat an eye. Never even bat an eye, and this is what we need to turn to. Let's try this for two or three years, before they start talking about this craziness of gun control.
Let me tell you, I, I called.
You know why they won't try, don't, you know why they won't try? They want to control the guns, just like they want free speech control. The liberals want it all, they want to own it all, they know it, and if you put on people, and we didn't have a shooting for a couple of years, or if we had a shooting, they were able to wipe the person out before he killed somebody, guess what? Guess what, then the liberals allude their argument, we need gun control.
Well, you're right, but the day this happened, before I heard anything from anybody, I called the, the, uh, sheriff of Bossier Parish, I called the sheriff of Caddo Parish, and I told him, I said, I wanna talk to you about a program, you know, which was an auxiliary group of guardians. You know, I said, we can be the first in the nation to provide this, and serve as a model. Let it work for six months, a year, whatever. And I never got a phone call, one, from either one of these individuals, not one phone call.
Unbelievable. All right, man, gotta run, thanks for the call, appreciate it. 844-766-6607. Hickson has a hotline. All right, let's go to phone lines, who am I speaking with?
Hey, Moon, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, who is this?
Okay, this is Jim. Look, I agree with you a hundred percent, Moon. I don't know why the government don't understand what you're trying to tell them. That's, that coach, if he'd have had a gun, I guarantee you, if he could come back and do that again, he would beg you for a gun. And they do need to put these, uh, retired policemen, uh, firemen, military, in strategic places throughout that schoolhouse, for us, the teachers that want to, that, you know, teach them how to use a gun, and let them have, and I believe that would be a good thing, Moon. You just act, I don't know why the government can't get a hold of this. Thank you, Moon.
I appreciate the call. What, it's, it's, it's the only thing we got? Of course, I'm concerned, it'll work. Go to the phone lines, who am I speaking with? Who am I speaking with?
Hey, Moon, Jody, how'd I be going, you doing?
Doing fine, sir.
Hey, I'm gonna make it quick, I know you're running out of time, but in nineteen ninety, um, a law was introduced by Gropen Joe Biden, signed by George W., H.W. Bush, uh, the Gun-Free School Zones, uh, Act, or Gun-Free Zone Law. If you break that federal law, you're submitted to a five thousand dollar fine or five years in prison. So, actually, gun, gun-free zones are the ultimate gun control, because guns are banned in the gun-free zone. And it didn't work.
No, but we got Senator Troy caught out of New Orleans saying, this is something he proposed, this wouldn't have happened here. Well, guess what? There were gun-free zones all over the country in every school. I don't know of a school that's not a gun-free zone.
Yep, and, and I replied to his, uh, his ignorant post there, so.
Yeah, well, you're gonna, you got, if you try, if you're gonna, if you're gonna reply to ignorant posts, you're gonna be busy all day, every year. We gotta go, God bless, have a great day. See you tomorrow, folks.